Please call the roll and take note of the time.
Excellent. 7:00 PM. Vice President Toby?
Here.
Commissioner Henson?
Here.
Commissioner Dusman?
Here. Here.
President Spain's absence. And I.
You forgot your name. Okay.
So let's move on to matters from the public. It does not look like we have anyone here, so we can skip that section. I recommend that we move towards discussion of discussion on the beach playground and initial designs. So Michelle Kelly and Liz Defoe. Upland Design will present the initial designs for the beach playground based on board and community feedback.
Excellent. Michelle's here tonight. She gave handouts to everybody that she'll be referring to today, so. Please follow along and.
All right, so this is just a little overview of the whole process and to show you where we're at in the process. So tonight, we're going to look at a couple of different concepts, an A and a B, and then a few options within those concepts. And then after that, we expect to put it online and to let the whole community be able to give their votes. And then, once that's all complete, we'll share the results with you and then make a recommendation to go into construction documents with the favorite items. All right, so just a reminder of our original open house where we gave lots of choices to the community. And then that also went online. So we ended up, I believe, with almost 300 different people giving their inputs, and these were our favorite things. So you'll see the nautical theme, the waterfall with the sand table. All of these things should look familiar from the last time I was here. But you'll see these flowing through the two different concepts. All right, so first, Concept A. This is a nautical themed park with a curved boardwalk loop that separates play and spray zones, featuring the return of the community's beloved dinghy, along with age appropriate play, spray features, shaded seating, and a sand play area. And here is all of Concept A. Let's see here. Wonderful. All right, so just a little bit, this is the existing building right here and the existing pergola, right? And the new walkout front. And then this is the structural pier here. So just a good reminder of where we're at. So the new boardwalk connects along this kind of outside edge, really giving that delineation between open sand beach play and this new playground and splash play area. And the colorful pieces in here is a rubber surfacing, and that's in both of them that helps make everything accessible. They come in, imagine that, blues as well as tans. So I brought a few samples so you could see kind of what they look like. The other nice thing about this is they are resilient so that anything, anyone that falls on them, it has that surfacing that makes it safe. And a life threatening or life debilitating injury is reduced because of this good surfacing. So you can see that. The other areas that are tan would be sand. And in those areas, we don't have anything that's taller than four feet. So that makes sure that kids and families are safe. All right, other, just a little bit of overview. You can see that also connects up over here. This is a shaded seating area, a shaded seating area here. And then the main structure is right here in the center. I'll show you some 3Ds of that. Goes out to here and then our swings. And then we have sand play and water play features in this space and this space over here. So that gives you kind of just an overview. And now we'll go through the of highlights. So first, the big structure. This is a five to 12 play structure. It's really geared towards a boat. And at the same time, it's also pretty see-through. That was a key thing was to be, make sure that the vision lines, you know, really are able to see through it and also to see the beautiful lake. But you can see some of the fun pieces on it. The ship's bow is actually a climbing wall. And then you have net climbers and a lookout balcony over on the left side. All right, a swish slide here, a double slide here. And then this is these hill, hillscape climbers and as well as this sort of circulation of play. Circulation of play is one of our big ways to get kids more active on a playground. And it's being able to go like up and down and around and create spaces, more play events that they can go between. And here you can see kind of a blow up of that ship and see up close. So there's a couple of fun panels on it as well, but a lot of panels that are also very see-through. The other nice thing about this is it has two shade features. So on the back of the ship, the big shade feature, and in the front, a little bit smaller. And that was definitely an item that people were excited about was to have more shade. And here's our different heights. So you can see our, the main part of the ship is four feet off the ground, but it goes all the way up to 72 inches off the ground for the tall slide. And then here's some of this ground level play with the hillside climbers, a boogie board. And the hillside, we actually could get them in blue. So it's showing in tan, but it's, we've asked them for the custom, the custom level on it. And they said, yes, we could do that in blue. So we'll have one more kind of blue highlight item. And then here's our swings. So we kind of talked about this at our last meeting. The flex swing over on the left is that new fun swing that also is, lets the sand fly right through it. But you also could put a couple of people on it. And then we have our standard belt swings, three of those, an ADA swing, which you can see over here on the right, and then two tot swings. And in this case, they are looking down the beach. In A. All right, now we're moving over to the spray features. So this one, of course, has the dinghy. So that's our kind of starting place for some of the people that love that piece. It would be a new one and it would have some, a spray feature that would allow you to dial down the actual water that's coming out. So unless the purchaser have a little bit more control of that. And then Larry the lobster and Ollie the octopus are two new guys, a little bit more ground level play. And then as an option, we have the little treasure chest or the alternate gravity cannons. So those would be, there'd be two of those so that you could, you know, shoot at each other. So those are kind of two different options, A or B. I'll just show you a little bit. Here's the, you can kind of see the treasure chest there. And then here's what it might look like with the cannons. So we'd love to have your input on those if you think one would be better or feel like the cannons better or the treasure chest. Any thoughts?
Can you go back and tell us that? Cannons.
Yeah, the octopus. Okay. Yeah. Actually, right, actually Larry originally, we had a different, Larry was a different color and he didn't look like a real lobster and we had them switch him to a red. He was kind of scarier before. Right, so, but you're right, Ollie is a little psychedelic, so yeah, we certainly can, they are variable. Yes, the water area is over here, right. So this is where there'll be water features in this area. And then this will not have water features and this will not have, like this, this one here. I haven't got to these two yet, but they don't have water. So, and I think we, we had some good requests where people could play with the sand but not have water, you know, have that choice. And so we very much defined those areas so that you could have a choice to not have water spraying.
You mean colors? Colors, okay.
We, so you like, we like the lobster, we like the octopus. We just want them, the colors to be more in the blues and greens and kind of.
Lobster could be like a darker red, become more subtle. I have a quick question too. Last time we did, we touched upon this, but how is the size compared to what we currently have and the number of pieces of equipment?
Yeah, so it's, we're kind of, there's two different options. This one is a little bit, it's larger as far as the structure goes. Well, the second one is, it's actually two pieces instead of one. And if you put, if you look at them both, it's actually larger than what you have, but separate, they kind of equal about what you have. Because you have two different structures right now.
But all pieces of equipment compared to what we have now?
Say that again.
Pieces of equipment, play equipment.
Oh, total count. Wow, Kyle.
We had talked about potentially enlarging it and I don't know whether.
It is, square foot wise, it's a little bit larger.
Not only square footage, but I meant like the actual things to plan, that's what matters the most.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So from a water perspective, by adding in, does it change like the equation of how much water we would be spending?
So from Michelle's point, these will be a little bit more manageable for us to dial in the volume of water that's coming out so we can try and not increase our overall water usage compared to what we have now to keep those operational costs down as well as environmental.
That would be our goal, to keep the same amount of water usage because it is operating expenses, yeah.
And if the water gets, sorry, I'm asking more questions. But the water and the sand, is there, does it seep into the play space? And like, does this material handle well with sand and water?
Right, so this is the best option for sand and water, you know, kind of play together. There's still maintenance to keep the sand off it, but it's very similar to what you have. You know, some of the rubber surfacing you have now, there will be maintenance to clean off the sand just because it blows.
If you notice, most of the water features are over, further away from the playground and that's purpose. And then the other, that one is more of like a sand table.
Okay.
Which wouldn't have spitting water. There's water, but not as much spitting.
Yeah, I don't think we have that much of a choice or a choice with using that rubberized thing. But I do know just from Friends Park because it has had the wear and tear issues where we have to.
We don't have, we don't have much of choice.
Is this, yeah, that's, I know, I know, but I'm just saying, has the technology improved at all or is it the exact same thing?
So Friends Park is a port in place system, so it's a unitary system across the board. These are individual tiles, so the benefit.
Can be, they're, they're a little bit better.
Interchangeable under swing sets, you can pull out that section similar like the artificial turf where you don't have to do the entire thing.
Yep.
For what it's worth, we don't install at our clubs and lounges. We refuse to install carpet anymore. Everything has to be, well, it's carpet, but it's all square.
Yeah.
It's a square tile, so you just take one out and put one in, which this looks like it is.
That's kind of what we do.
I think I have two questions here. One is, can you explain to me how, does the boardwalk integrate into an ADA accessibility for beach access? Or is that going to be a separate mat that you're rolling out as well? That was one question.
To get to the water, there'll be still the ADA accessible mat that goes all the way out.
Okay, so we're not going to leverage, you're not going to have the ADA mat come to this boardwalk at all?
Um, well, we'll have ADA access all the way through that. So ADA access is from the board, the original boardwalk to this.
Where, my question is, where is the mat going to end up? Like today.
It's over here.
But it's not shown on here. We would have to design it somewhere probably along that radius. To tie on and go to the water's edge.
Good, I like that. I think that's probably a little bit better for the ADA because they can get further out before they have to go on that mat. That's a little bit.
Yeah. Harder to do.
And I'm trying to figure out from you, and I'm hoping you can give me the answer. What is the theory behind splitting the sand into sort of two areas? I see that as more of a nuisance than a good thing within the radius of the boardwalk. Like why, within, in that boardwalk, you have sand surface A, then you've got
Yeah.
the fun recycled tires. And then you've got sand surface B. I'm trying to figure out why. And I know the other one has one design. What's the advantage?
So, well, in the two different designs, we really wanted to give you all and the community different choices on how the layout could work. But as far as splitting them in this design, what we have going on is the bigger space is that we have the water play within that. The smaller space, we have no water play and it also has accessible components. So both of them have accessible components, but the smaller one is a little bit like, it's dry and it lets that kind of border between them be the point that, you know, you know, you're not going to get wet from the water features.
Do both, do both designs have the same sort of average sand square footage versus?
Um.
Versus a surface?
Actually, I do have those quantities in here, so I've.
Why don't we go on to the next design before we answer questions?
Yeah, I will show, I do have that square footage, you can see it. All right, so these guys, all right, so this is still, we're still in A. But I just want to highlight here, this is that sand area where, except for the boat, the other ones on this are all part of this dry play. So we have the elevated sands table, the super scoop, and the sand works. Again, geared towards two to five year olds. And then just over the border, we have another dry piece, which is the boat. The boat also has, it has a little sail and custom, we got them to add this really fun.
Like a pulley.
Pulley, thank you. I'm like, pulley? Okay, so you do this with it and the sand can go up and down, so we're pretty excited. We're like, we really want this on this and we got them to do that.
Yeah.
So that's that one. And then here's the water sand and you can see that's right here. So it's in our water, this is our water zone area. And this doesn't spray, it just goes into the sand table, you know, and it lets the kids, you can move this guy around so the water can go into these different buckets. And then you can go down to here and then you could also put sand up on top. So lots of choices on, on being able to play with the water and the sand together. And then here's our rubber in this concept. This, we have two blues and there's 5,230 square feet of the actual. That's like a large playground. It's a good, it's a good amount. So our swings are all under that as well as the main boat. All right, and then additional shade, again, shade being really important. We have two more locations here and here. And then we'd be using some seating, whoa, some seating that is, follows the purchaser standards. And then you can see, we can get the shade sails and lots of good blues. So whatever final colors are chosen, we can make that really sing with everything else. All right, so Concept B. So this one is also, obviously it is nautical themed. But it's, instead of a boat, we have this really fun structure that has this swirling shade sail up on top and lots and lots of activities. One, there are a couple of items that are in both though. So the boat is one of those things that was very favored and so you see that one in, in both options. All right, so this layout, it really flips what's going on by bringing that structure closer to the existing building and the swings looking out to sea. So when you're swinging, instead of looking down the beach here, you're looking out to sea. And, and then as noted, the sand play area is all in one space. So we're just giving another choice, like how could we lay this out and how will it work? Another important thing is that we have a larger structure and then we have a smaller fish. So let's get into this a little bit. Here's our structure, again, nice big shade over the top of it. I think what's really fun about this is it is a, it's a triangle of play inside, underneath this wonderful shade thing. We have a slide that's 88 inches tall. And just to compare that with A, the tallest one in A is 72 inches. So we're just a little bit higher on this one. And our low slide is the same height as our low slide at 48 inches. Okay, and let's go one more. Here is a really good image to see the triangle of play. So you can run across here, up here, over here and across here, or you could just lay in the net in the middle. So it has, it has a really fun sort of, I don't know, new age boat feel with that net kind of, in the, like you're, like a big sail over the top of you. And then this is an opposite view, just so you can see this cool climber that's on the other side, it kind of peeking out right here. And then there's these other sideline climbers that also have, they have a little bit of chain, so they move. So this one just has a lot of energy and movement. There's another climbing wall with, with balls over here on this side. Just a lot going on and I think it's really lends to some imaginative play of all sorts of different things. And then here's our guppy. So this is, this is more climbing and sliding and lots of activity while the guppy is, is ground level. So the guppy has, you know, it has a little bit of climbing, it has some sitting inside. It's also a place to get away. One of the things we, this is, we're going to try to do is work with them. They just couldn't get us a 3D fast enough because it's completely custom, but is to actually put, I gotta go back. Make one of these panels a little bit more see-through. So whether it's, whether it's bars, but, but we love the guppy, he's really, he's really fun.
Metal or is it composite?
He is, he or she is metal. And then these are like very standard of plastic, you know, cable.
And the reason we wanted, we asked for, to take one of the panels out is we wanted very see-through.
Yeah.
Not only for sightlines for, to the lake, but also at night when public safety comes down to make sure no one's in there. And if we're, if they're, we have to do water rescue, we want to be able to know who's in what really fast, so we want to be able to just look at the guppy. No one's in there, okay, we can focus there. So we have, if you notice, both designs have very open and that's designed on purpose, so we have sightlines to see quickly.
Yeah. Oh yeah, go ahead.
Is there, I love the guppy. Like there's some, like, is there an opportunity when it goes out to the public to potentially mix and match certain?
So we do have, we have it set up to, for them to be able to pick like their favorite structures, their favorite water play. You know, they, certain things have to go together. For instance, the, the two, Concept A and Concept B is two different water companies. So we cannot mix and match them because then we have controllers and that don't work together with the pieces. So that is not as mix and match. The water features, right. But the drive, any of the dry features or the play equipment is all very mix and match. Yeah, so. Okay, so the swings, I won't spend much time on those, but those are the same as you saw in A because the community really picked what they wanted. And, and then here's our water features. So in this one, we have a tall piece, the crow's nest. And then the calypso, which is 37 inches high at the top. And you can see it is a cannon as well, but it's also something you can hide behind. The panels are translucent, so you can see through them. You can see if there's somebody, you know, sitting there. And then the blowfish is located on the, the concrete. So again, trying to make sure there's that water play that is accessible. And this is option one for this. I want to give you an option two. So this one also has the crow's nest, you know, going with that fun, you know, tall thing. But here we have the water O. We had talked about that idea of being able to run through something. And then the dolphin, and the dolphin is, you know, located again on that accessible spot. So we'd love to have.
Where would the water O go? On the accessible spot?
No, the, the dolphin.
Dolphin's inaccessible.
Or the blowfish. Those are the two that are sitting either on concrete.
Then where does the water O star?
The water O is like over, oh, it, it, it's right here. But I know you can't see the line. It went under the color, but it is, it's right where the arrows is, right there.
Well, I've made my decision already, so.
All right, so I'll show you them both again. So feet.
And change, the dolphin and the blowfish.
Yeah.
Completely, right, yep.
I mean, to me, I liked having one sand area because I, I think it's a pain for you guys and I'd like to hear what the, what you all think, but I like having one sand area. And I think B is, there's just so much more openness about it that I really appreciate. My one, my one thing for you, Lisa or Bobby. You know, I was down at the beach earlier, down at Beach's Weekend. And when you're sitting at the desk, you can kind of go out and you can see the entire beach flow. Does, does the triangle, I know it's open. Are you concerned, is there any reason why you would need to see the entire beach from the desk? From those doors or is it open enough that it doesn't?
The thing we want to make sure is that if there's someone sitting at the manager's desk, they have a sightline to the lake. And I can't tell from this picture if that's what we'd make sure is from, just from that seat manager, they can see the lifeguard chair right there. Other than that, we're fine. So we just have to make sure this playground piece is over enough to facilitate that sightline.
But I think, I think it's, it's really, I do like having one sand versus two sand. And it looks to me, having that guppy there, this seems much more in line with like the beach, the colors, you don't, I don't want a blue lobster, I think. I mean, if you guys, if it's, the red lobster, by the way, does not bother me, but if it bothers some, like making a lobster blue doesn't feel as, as right. This one seems to be a little more in line and theme with what we're, what we're looking for, at least from my opinion, but.
I would agree. This one's intuitive.
Yeah, and I love, I gotta tell you, I love the water O. Like that to me is.
Like that and the crow's nest.
Yeah.
Keep in mind that then, that little ship that we have currently does not come from this water company, but we do have a new ship, that red one or boat or whatever you call it, spray feature.
Can we, can we talk about the dinghy for a second? I know it's the dinghy. We all love the dinghy because it has kind of nostalgia for us. But is, was the dinghy from the, from the community, was that something that they were like, we have to have a dinghy or do we have to have a source of water where we can build tunnels?
I think in the survey, the dinghy was not number one. It was number two, but close, a close second if I recall the.
Okay.
Survey votes.
For me, I like the.
Can you go back to the, the red boat? I mean, Michelle?
Maybe.
I think it's.
Sorry, it just, just won't click.
There we go. So it's still a boat and it can enhance little spurts outside, so actually more water played for.
I like the water features of the first one, but the layout of B and I like the guppy of B. I'm, I'm a toss-up between the actual play structures. I love that netting of B. The rest of it, it has a lot going on, like you said, and I don't, the look of it, I'm not sure people will like. It seemed. So I'm, I'm kind of a mishmash between all of them. But, but I don't have strong feelings about any of that. Like, so if you guys all liked the water features of the other one, that's fine. I think they're both, I think either water feature company is a big win and it's super exciting. So, but if I had to pick, I don't know why, I like the cannons. I think for the beach playground, I just like a simpler look that doesn't take away from the beauty of the beach and the lake.
That's what they did with the, the playground up top. Had that concept up, let's keep it simple. We, we thought about a really high one, if you recall. We thought about like a tower that you can kind of get up and you could actually look out and see
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The beach if you get up there, but then I think that the board wanted it to be more in line with the serenity of the park.
Yeah.
So I could see exactly why you, why you think that. I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit indifferent for there. I, I like the idea that the kids have, I mean, it looks like this is a, a structure to really kind of enjoy and to play in. I think both are, but the second one to me.
I expect a little taller, a little bigger.
A little bigger slide. But the second one to me seems more kind of health and outdoors-ish. Like the, a little more climbing, a little more activity.
Play features.
Yeah.
Playability.
So that's, but I hear you, it's, I don't really have strong.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
And that's the point that.
The community.
Yeah, the community hopefully. Present to the community is two playground designs, right? And, and we'll get feedback which one they want and maybe that'll help your decision. So I guess if what we're looking for is like, oh, we don't like, we don't like, we don't even want that shown to the community, which.
I don't want the purple of the octopus. I don't want the purple of the octopus.
That's it.
Everything else is fabulous. I really like the shade, where you got, you guys thought very strategically about where you put shade. And I think the community is going to love that, both over the play structure, but then also for parents or, you know, caregivers who are going to sit. I think that was phenomenally done for both A and B.
So if these two, we, we don't want to give the community both of these because there'll be way too many between A and B. And so between these two, are we agreeing, we like two?
Can we switch out the, I really like the blowfish over the dolphin because just because dolphins aren't native to Lake Michigan and fish are.
Yeah, that's fine.
Both fish are bad.
Pirates aren't really native to.
Cool, but this one also, I don't know if you've seen the little dumping bucket and kids love the little dumping bucket.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, um, go with the blowfish O and the dumping bucket.
Yep.
Okay.
Eric agrees.
Okay.
I do have a question about the guppy. He said it's metal. Whenever I think about metal, it's hot.
That's what I was thinking.
Is that a problem? It's, I shouldn't be worried about anymore because I slid down a lot of metal slides in my day and it was.
Right.
You know?
We have Aqua right now, so we might go with a light, a little bit lighter blue. It really is about the reflection of light, you know, not.
If it's hot, it's.
The lighter it is.
Useless, yeah.
Yeah, the more it reflects.
And this, these materials handle the heat very well.
Do they what?
Handle the heat as well.
Yeah, the lighter the color, the better off it is. Yeah, so we, but the tiles only come in so many colors, so we're, we are kind of limited to those.
Cause I know the old tile that we have, the small amount, they were saying, uh, that it gets hot. And it really, you can't even stand on it. So I assume it, it's more or less south, it's an old material, obviously, but.
Yeah.
It's more or less south with this.
Yeah, I think we could go with that, the one in your hand and less of the darker, because I think the darker is where you get it hotter. You know, as far as temperature goes.
Also give a big thumbs up to the pulleys for the sail going up and down and B. I think that's, I think kids are gonna like that.
Okay, I have a few more slides of B. So this is our sand and water play. So it is a table as well, it's a little bit smaller. And in the survey, we'll give the community a choice. So you get A or B, and so, um, they'll be able to make that. And then, uh, again, we have a super scoop. And then, uh, in this one, we also have the rotating sand table, so you kind of can pour sand. But again, this is dry play, so there's no water with this feature and then the same boat. And then here's our rubber surfacing. So here we're at four thousand six hundred and ninety-five, so before we were over five thousand. So we're a little bit less and there's sort of a balance. Obviously, the, the surfacing costs a lot, so there's a balance between the overall budget. The budgets are really close to each other as far as that goes, but, um, we could always reduce this a little bit if we switch something up and got the more expensive options. We could pull back a little bit of the surfacing. And then we.
Can I, can you go back to that one?
Yeah.
Is there a possibility, if we don't have the sightlines, where that playground piece is to switch the sand and the uh, tile, I guess, am I saying that right, Cal?
Yeah, well, I think another way to state is the concept, the layouts are interchangeable. So we could choose if the public and the board like option one or option two, they can both be oriented if sightlines are an issue. So is that something the board wants to discuss? Do they prefer a layout? I mean, over one or the other, um.
My preference is to have one sand area and one play area.
Yeah, I think.
That's not what I asked.
The question is, can you rotate, can you rotate this whole?
Like this, ninety degrees.
Yes.
Ninety degree turn.
Blue part ninety degrees.
The swings are on the boardwalk.
The sideline anyway.
I, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, we can, we can, yeah, we pretty much could rotate at ninety degrees or we could even switch the swings in the structure.
Yeah.
And let the, because then the swings would be in front of the building and much more see-through.
Exactly, that's what I'm thinking.
I don't love, I don't, I'm a little bit nervous about the playground so close to the manager's seat at the, at the desk. I, I like, I like the idea of, you know, having it rotated, you have the, the swinger B and then just make this all sand. Right, so I think it's rotated ninety degrees.
So for the public, would you rather show them just one layout? But then give all the choices.
I would.
I think if we feel strongly that, I, I, I don't feel strongly, but I have a slight preference. I actually want to hear from Kyle. Like to me, having two sand areas stinks because it's just another area that you're gonna have to.
You can see both.
Maintain, um, but I want to, I want to understand from you.
The, the one versus two sand areas wasn't something that jumped out to me as a major concern. We have to go out there and blow off the hardscapes regardless. Um, it, it, sand gets everywhere out there, so I'm not too worried about it being separated one versus two. Uh, yeah, I think again, to the point of the, the sightlines, i- if it's a matter of flipping the swings to be in front of the building and then shifting the structure over. And then we're showing two layouts that the board is comfortable with, because I think the last thing we want to do is show a layout that the public comes back and then there's, you know, concern that we don't actually want that there. Uh, the structures are still the same.
Yeah, but to point, we, we only have to show one layout. If we, if we really like a layout and then have the community more input on the fixtures, because layout is more.
Operational, yeah.
But yeah, so.
I'm, I'm liking more and more that we're talking about it here, that the, you know, overall, just showing the one sand area, especially even it sounds like cost-wise maintenance, well, as far as it, it uses less tiles. I think it'll look nicer and it ma- maintenance might be, you know, a little easier.
Yeah, I like, yes.
Concept B. I think we're all saying concept B for showing the public.
But switching.
Both, you're showing the public both concepts.
Well, no, I thought one layout, we said one layout was different.
You're showing the public, I think, both features.
Right, yes, right.
And you like concept B layout.
Yeah.
Just.
Yes.
Concept B layout.
We're saying this is like, this is the layout, but this is not the.
The features can be.
Funny.
Interchanged.
Love, um, I, I would love to.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
Rotate it ninety degrees.
Yeah. I don't think you should walk into a park with the swings or you're walking to swings. That seems like it's.
But like the same shape with only one sand.
You don't walk right into.
The one option.
Yeah.
So almost like taking B and rotating it ninety degrees so that the swings and the structure are like, hey, but the sand is all one.
Yeah.
Okay, did you guys hear that? So what you're saying is they're gonna switch it so that the, um, the swings and the structure are like concept A, but the.
Right.
It's only a sand area and thing like B.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
The tall thing, yeah, the chimney on A goes away. The, I'm calling it chimney, the walkway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Friar. Yeah. Okay, you got it.
Agreed.
Okay.
So the, the swings face the beach when they're swinging.
Yeah.
The water.
Yeah, I, I think it will, I also think it, it doesn't break up the beach as mu- I don't know. I think it, I think it elongates.
Yeah.
It elongates the beach, puts the stuff on the side. Um, and it's gonna be awesome. Either way, I think we're winning.
Okay.
Yeah, agreed.
Awesome, really good. All right, fabulous. Um, I was just, this is a summary, just so you could see, there is, there is a lot going on in both of these, lots and lots of wonderful features. And so whatever the community picks, it's gonna be wonderful. And then just to, just so you can kind of see what the survey is gonna look like, we're gonna show, give them a, you know, the A and the B choices and then it will be very clear cut as far as, you know, what people love. And a little, we're gonna get rid of these. We had originally had like letting them choose, you know, locations. But then we will do, um, where they can see these favorite elements. And we'll do them, the water, sand together, the sand by itself, the water by itself. So each of those categories will be choose A or choose B, choose A or choose B. And, and they, so there's kind of, you know, lots of choices and, and that's it. So there'll be about ten questions for the community and the very end, um, will have an open-ended question. So they can add anything, any other comments that they want.
Get really weird things, like take the rocks off the beach.
Like we can, it also makes people feel like we're listening and then maybe something great comes out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I think we're gonna be in a good spot. Either way, I think they're, they're really cool concepts and appreciate you taking the, the feedback on the, some of the colors and the rotation.
Is this the tile for that's going around the boardwalk?
Uh, the, no, that, that's like the.
Not boardwalk, I'm sorry, this is the beige, this is the beige.
That's like the beige.
That's what I'm sorry, I missed.
Yes, it is the beige.
For this one, I mean, once again, I don't know, maybe I'm overly concerned about the heat, but obviously everybody's barefoot is gonna be on this. So this is awfully dark. This is like sixty percent black. And that scares me a little bit. If it's gonna be hot, the kids aren't gonna be able to walk on it.
All right. What we can do about getting some lighter, I, I think it's a really good point for the beach and see if we can get some lighter tan in that or even some cream. Because if we could get some cream in it, it would really help.
So right, right now, we don't have any surface besides sand for the kids.
There's tile under those trucks. There's tile and the tiles are like a blue, blue colored.
It's covered by sand a lot.
There's really not much hotter on a hot day.
Than sand, yeah.
Like just put that out there.
Yeah.
Sand is like the.
They're wearing beach shoes that they.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's true. I'm just saying, I just, I mean, this is what they play on, this is what, I, I just, I just know when I was down there and I asked some of the counselors, what, what, what don't the kids like? And they said, those tiles there, the kids can't stand on them most of the summer. So that was bursting.
Visually look nice, um, because it looks like that transitions right into the sand if it was lighter too, I think that could be really pretty.
All right, we will find some good choices. All right, anything else?
Yeah.
Awesome, so we'll make some updates and then get the survey all in a good place and then share it and it'll go up on your website soon.
Oh, there is some blue tile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay, back to me. Um, thank you very much, appreciate that. Let's have, um, Kyle, can we talk about discussions on greenhouse bids? You can provide a summary from the bids received for the Shelton Park greenhouse construction from the bidding on August twenty eighth.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kovey. Uh, so everyone should have a memo in front of them that was put together. Uh, we opened our, uh, bids for the Shelton Park greenhouse, uh, last Thursday, August twenty eighth. Um, below table number one is the bid tabulation. We did have fifteen contractors pick up the bid packet. We did receive five bid submissions. Uh, so getting fifteen contractors to pick up and five bid submissions does kind of indicate that it was, it was good competitive bidding and current market pricing for the work. Um, those bids in first table one, uh, the lowest bidder was Shapkus Brothers at six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, table number two is the budget breakdown. As you could see, the total budget, uh, including our contingencies was six hundred and three thousand. The total projected project cost, uh, is seven hundred and three thousand dollars. So we do have a hundred thousand dollar over budget on the bids that we received. The, uh, main driver of that overage is likely due to the utility locations. So as we got deeper into design, it was realized that electric and water had to come from significantly further parts of the park in order to get to the greenhouse site. And so, uh, we reviewed the bids, uh, spoke with Shapkus Brothers. There's really not a whole lot of areas in this particular project to cut from. Uh, really only two options would be removing the split rail fence that's a seven thousand dollar cost, um, which could be done at a later date, possibly as in-house labor. Uh, the only other real option is to remove the stone veneer from the base of the greenhouse, which staff would not recommend, just given, um, the look and the aesthetic that that provides to the greenhouse. Uh, so obviously we, we don't want to get high bids back, that's not what we're certainly seeking. We want to be right on our number, uh, but the board may recall that, um, Shelton Park tennis courts came back in at, uh, projected a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars under budget and Milton Park Playground at seventy-eight thousand dollars under budget. So, um, again, some projects come back high, some low, you know, to look at it from a balancing standpoint, uh, our fund balances could um, certainly absorb that and staff would recommend that we do accept Shapkus Brothers, uh, bid of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Would open it up to any questions, clarifications, comments?
How often have you worked with them before?
Shapkus, I've worked with Shapkus in Arlington Heights a few times, not particularly here at Glencoe, but they're a very big reputable company. They do lots of work.
Used by a lot of our districts and we, we had great references. That's something we checked before, didn't bring it to you. And remember, we're obligated to go with the lowest responsible bidder unless we have a reason that we can exclude them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We're happy.
Well, I guess it looks like Shelton and Milton's rainy day fund could get used up here, right?
Yeah, and on the backside of the memo, the last table will just kind of show those three projects broken down. So, uh, if the board does choose to accept Shapkus's, uh, bid, we project that those three projects would still be ninety-three thousand dollars under total budget, uh, including contingencies.
Thoughts?
I'm fine going with, um, the shade, shaving it and proceeding with it. And the, the split rail fencing, um, it looks like it's a relatively small amount. I don't know if it's worth it, uh, to take that in-house to save seven thousand dollars. Um, I don't know how long it takes to make, you know, how long would it take to make in-house? What do you think on the split rail fencing aspect? Personal recommendation would be we accept it as part of the bid package, make sure it's all done as one unified project. And when it's ready to open, it looks like it's ready to go, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
For that cost, certainly relative to the project cost.
You, do you see any risk of potentially, um, having any timeline issues going with the lower?
That's a great, great question. So, uh, critical timeline for us is to get foundation work done, um, pouring concrete before the winter arrives. Uh, so we feel pretty confident that we can get that work done before, let's say, end of November. That's typically when things start to turn to the point of not being able to. Uh, that's the biggest, you know, milestone to make sure we hit. It is a kit, uh, build, so once that foundation's in place, uh, and utilities are run, they should be able to do the work pretty much in any weather conditions barring, you know, a blizzard with, you know, three feet of snow on the ground.
And payment terms are comparable relative to the, the payment terms in terms of how we're making payments them? Is it comparable to the other ones or is by having a lower offer, they're asking for more payment upfront or how does that work?
Nope, well, we typically bill on a monthly billing cycle for these sorts of projects. Um, so they'll send their billing us for the work that was actually done in the previous month.
And, and we are typically faster payers, which a lot of these contractors I think are aware of and, um, you know, it just bodes well for us. Yeah.
And on our projects.
Correct.
We're not, I don't think we're earning significant amounts of interest on, on the difference.
I mean, we're, we're careful about how we sweep our cash from our interest-bearing accounts to our operating.
We would look to go for approval in the September, in two weeks at the September board meeting, so that will give them time to mobilize and do the concrete work.
Okay. I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
Sounds like we have consensus.
All right, good job.
Thank you, good discussion. Um, let us shift now to the reviews of the categories of service. Bobby will review the categories of service and answer any questions.
Great, good evening commissioners, it's that time of year where we review the annual, um, categories of services required by our fees and charges policy. Um, so this is an important step as we go through the budget process. And the categories of service, they basically clarify how we classify our programs, our facilities and services by the level of cost recovery. Um, our cost recovery model uses net margin, um, as its measurement. And we have five categories. We have fully subsidized, basic public, public, extra public and private. Um, staff is recommending to review the policy and to make no changes others than some language updates. We're gonna be looking for approval at the September meeting and we'll be taking B back from the board.
Yeah, Bobby, this has not changed in a number of years.
Fifteen years, well, we changed the, the private a little bit.
September of twenty-two, we revised the private for.
Related to children's circle.
Got it, right.
Started this process.
Salaries.
Yeah, and I started thirteen and a half years ago, we started the category services and only minor changes in the private categories have been made.
And so this is a, just an annual review that we are required to do.
Correct, we have a fees and charges policy that requires an annual review.
So what this helps is when the board's, remember, high level shuts the philosophy of each of the program areas. And then this helps the staff then set the fees.
Yeah.
Based on these categories, stay with these parameters.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see any reason to shift, it doesn't seem like anything's been broken over the past. Have you heard complaints from the community or anything?
No, I think you'll probably remember children's circle is probably one of the, the discussions at, at market. We're a private, we're oper- operating at a private market rate with children's circles. So we're compared to other daycares in, in the local area. But other than that, no, I think our fees are, are, are pretty reasonable. We're having strong enrollments and our financials are in good shape. So I don't think there's a need for a major change to any of the policies as you see in the document, really it is just some, some language updates.
Language updates where you see the staff recommendations, correct? Language updates where you see the staff recommendations, correct?
Yeah, so there's three major ones. One's related to updating language to pass holder, non-pass holder for beach rentals um, from resident, non-resident, and then, uh, removing the word early, early learning center, as that's been folded into children's circle starting this month. And then, um, changing the, updating the word Watts, Watts Ice Center to Ice Ring Operations should kind of more reflect the true operations of the district.
Can you go, can you explain number one in a little bit more detail where we delete the phrase and trellis rentals and fifty percent more than resident? So what are we, what do we want to accomplish with number one?
So what we're trying to do with that is trying to drive pass sales. So what we're doing is we're giving the discount to pass holders. So what we're saying is if you have a pass, you get a pass holder rate versus previously, we had a resident, non-resident pass rate. So the goal is to try to make as much value, uh, for pass holders as possible. It's kind of like that Amazon model where if you have a Prime membership, you get additional benefits, you can take advantage of that versus resident, non-resident.
It becomes agnostic to whether we're a resident or non-resident.
I'm sorry, repeat the question.
It becomes agnostic. So the model you're shifting to is basically saying it doesn't matter if you're a resident?
Just, just for those rentals. So that would be for like paddleboards and kayaks, it would be a good example. So if you're a pass holder, we want to encourage you as a pass holder to rent paddleboards, and you're gonna get a discount for your, for your pass versus the, uh, resident, non-resident.
So it'll still be a resident, non-resident.
Sold over.
Right, right, so it's, I got you now, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So, so no additional feedback from the board? They're okay with staff's recommendation and for the, bring to the September board meeting?
Okay.
Yeah.
So advance for approval in September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, thank you, Bobby. Let's discuss the renewal of, of the audit contract. John, can you please review the information of the audit contract renewal and answer any questions from the board?
Sure, so we're recommending to renew our contract with Ladderback and Amen for an additional three years. Uh, Ladderback has provided a three-year renewal, which includes very modest increases from our prior year fees. We did compare our audit fee to those of our neighbors and found that we are getting pretty good value from our audit contract, uh, which is further detailed in tonight's packet. Um, I, and I'll just say, I think it speaks to the great work that our accounting manager, Brian, does in preparing for the audit. Um, they really know what they're getting when they come out here. Um, I think they recognize how clean the audit is and, um, you know, they're able to price it competitively based on, um, the fact that we, we are ready for them. Um, and they're, uh, you know, there's not a lot of back and forth. It's a pretty quick turnaround. Um, they come out for fieldwork in mid-April. Obviously, our fiscal year end is the end of February. So a pretty quick turnaround there. Um, and, um, that's definitely what the auditing firms like. They like to get their work scheduled, um, to have their staff assign a specific number of hours, have it take that number of hours and be done with it. So I think that's part of it also.
I think John's being modest, but John was also auditor, and so I think that plays into it, because they know that as a past auditor, that he's gonna have everything, um, ready to go for them also. So, yeah, that's a big part of why I think we get this really phenomenal fee.
Yeah, um, do you, the other, the other enterprises that have twenty percent and seven percent, did we get a chance to, have we ever engaged with them for an RFP or anything recently?
Um, we, I'm very familiar with the two firms. Um, just from, you know, my background and work with the CPA Society's Government Report Review Committee. Um, they're both good firms. I, I would really anticipate them to be a significantly higher fee if we were to shop.
How long have we been with them?
We've been with them since approximately two thousand and ten. We did ask for a partner rotation three years ago, which allowed for, um, a new executive to come onto the engagement for a fresh set of eyes. GFOA recommends that you do that about every five years, and, and, and the nice thing here is they have the depth to be able to do that. So if we did, um, you know, a couple of years down the road, want to ask for a new partner or a senior manager on the engagement, we'd be able to do so. Um, they have cycled through, through some, uh, new staff, uh, the, the people that come out and do the fieldwork. Um, unfortunately, there is a lot of turnover in that industry, especially, um, with governmental firms. It's just difficult right now um, to find good governmental firms. Um, folks downstate are really struggling with that, or we at least have the benefit of being in a metropolitan area and having a little more access to firms that have that expertise, because it really is, it really is a, a lot different than what you would see, um, you know, in a private sector type engagement.
Yeah, I think last time they came, they were talking about, um, how incredible our park district is run versus some other ones that they see. So clearly, they see things across an entire gamut. If you have thirty-three percent of all the audits for the park districts, you're gonna see some that are good and you're gonna see some that are less than good, and ours always tend to be, tend to be good. So it, it's not like, um, it's not like they only represent, you know, the, the crandlogram.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, do we feel like we have consensus on moving forward with?
Yes.
Yeah.
These individuals, oh, great. Um, John, thank you so much. Um, now we have the lively topic of discussion on the park district commissioner vacancy. Lisa, please lead a discussion on reviewing the applicants to fill the vacancy.
Excellent. So as the board knows, we put out a call for, um, residents to apply to be a commissioner. We did that in three different forms. We, uh, contacted the caucus to ask if there's any one they would recommend and, and forward us on, uh, any names, and they forwarded us on two names. I then contacted them. Uh, those two names, one person, uh, chose to apply, which application is in here. We then put it on social media and on our website. And they replied, message Carol, it was linked in there, so all they had to do is go to the, to the applications. So we received four applications, which I, uh, forwarded on to the board this morning. So it's F nine, no cock, no, no other applications have come in at this time. Um, um, so they're, they're for your review and discussion. Uh, what I would recommend is that you bring either two or all four back. Choose three, it's kind of awkward. So, um, to the, uh, September board meeting for interview. So our agenda looks a little light. We did a lot of discussion today. So bring them back for interview and then make the decision and then go for approval. You can discuss again in October and then appoint in October.
How does the interview process work? I mean, we're here, we're all sitting around. How we, how do you, how do you envision that?
Yep, we'll, uh, we'll provide questions. I'll give you some questions, and you can also, um, provide questions to me. So that's what I would call any questions you would like to ask of the applicants. And then, um, you would just take turns, just like with a job interview.
Okay.
Would be, yeah.
It probably makes sense, well, two things. One, the other person that the village nominee committee brought to us, um, mentioned that they just don't think they have the time commitment to do this. It wasn't, um, it wasn't anything like they didn't want to or.
Oh, no, it was the time.
Right, it was, it was a, a recognition that situation has changed.
Maybe later, but then.
Right, so, so we had, so we had at least one from the village nominating committee, um, and three others. I think, um, it may be wise for us to, to think about or to send Lisa independently some questions that we would want answered. Um, and maybe Lisa, you can help, um, ask those questions, but we should certainly ask, um,
Yep.
Ask questions during the thing. It's real, it's really, it's a really important, um, it's a really important obligation that we have to, to choose someone that, um, represents our needs, represents the community's needs and gives us an opportunity to, to shape the future of the park district. So I'm, I'm excited about that opportunity. Um, I think it would be very, um, wise of us to think about as we've reviewed the applications, if there are, you know, um, figure out if there are two or four, I agree, three would be a little bit of a challenge. Um, if there are two that sort of stand out from their applications, and if not, then maybe we do bring all four in. Um, but we'd love to get thoughts on it from anyone here in the room. Not I can kick it off, but I want to hear what, what you guys think.
Well, I think, what, what names were saying?
Well, tell, tell us what you thought of the.
Two people, I think two people stood out.
Yeah.
Megan and, um, Ashley, isn't it?
Ashley?
Ashley.
Megan, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. All four candidates were good.
Yeah.
Um, they're four great choices. Um, two that stood out, um, for me were also Meg and Ashley. Um, based on kind of our needs and their backgrounds.
Yeah.
Um, I thought they both seemed like they could be excellent fits and opportunities, um, to take Carol's.
I would agree. Megan and Ashley stood up.
Yeah, I think, um, I think you've got, of those, of the four applicants that came in, you know, one of them has experience on the board, but I think, um, may not, may not be the right fit moving forward. Um, but the, I think Megan really put incredible effort into her application. Um, and it, it certainly shows a dedication, um, to the application process. Um, and I think Ashley's background with the park district being on some of the committees, understanding what we do, understand how we move forward is probably a good thing. So I'm, I'm perfectly fine bringing those two candidates in and, and seeing if we have a good, um, a good fit after, um, after the September meeting. So, does that work for you, Lisa?
Mm-hmm. Sounds good.
Okay.
So we'll plan to move forward with Megan and Ashley, and for interviews, uh, at the board meeting, I will contact both. Would you like that to be at the start of the meeting or at the end of the meeting?
Um, let's do it at the start of the meeting so they can, they can, in fairness to them, although in theory, actually doing it at the end of the meeting lets them actually see what one of our meetings looks like.
Um, but maybe they could stay and see.
They could say, they have the option to stay.
Yeah.
They have the option to stay. Okay. Okay, um, well, thank you very much. I think we have consensus on moving forward there as well.
So we then email you some questions, Lisa?
Yes, please do. Yep, and I'll incorporate them and I'll have, and I'll send them out beforehand, and you guys, I don't want that question or whatever, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it can make for an efficient thing, and it's actually, it's nice to have you deliver some of these questions, but I do think that we should be active and ask follow-ups and ask questions that, that don't get addressed. Um, as I said, it's an important part of our, of our process and important part of the, um, it was set up this way for a reason, so we should take advantage of it.
It has been customary that the, a board member contacts the other two that did not get advanced. So, um, I would need someone, if you don't mind, to tie them. You can take one for the team.
I'll take one for the team, sure.
Because the last thing we want, we want people to keep on applying, because, you know, something that's really hard, so.
Yeah.
And.
I, I think you said it right. There, there are, we have four good candidates, and there may be a time where those other two candidates stand out a little bit more. So, um, I will reach out to them. We can coordinate, uh, when.
So, when, how is a decision made? The, how's, what's the process with that?
So you, you would interview, and then you would have a discussion probably at the October committee meeting.
Okay.
Or, or you could do it at the end of the board meeting too. You could interview, do our business and talk openly about, um, at the candidates to make a choice, and then we, you would do official action item to appoint them.
Is that done on, when we're being videotaped, everything, it's all like?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything has to be in open.
Okay, that's what I figured, yeah.
Yeah. Can't do anything outside. What we can do, is that at a committee, we don't have to, um, i- if we have discussion, we don't have to, uh, post. It's not by law, we don't have to post the, um, meeting dialogue or video. Um, and we can, and the minutes are not verbatim, so we just have discuss the candidates. So.
Okay.
At the committee, you have a little bit more, um, ability to talk freely.
As a goal, they have the person in, in November, is that when it is?
Yeah, uh, yes, yes. What I would recommend is if you're ready to make a decision by October, you vote in May, October, and they seat it in October.
Okay.
If I say someone by the October meeting.
Historically, when we did this last, um, we had the exact same questions you're asking, Gary. Um, and, and it, um, there were some discussions that we knew were public, but it's, it's actually okay. Um, I think, uh, you know, I don't know if anyone went back and listened or if anyone did anything with it. Um, no one attended the meeting. I believe that it was actually during, was it during COVID? It was online.
It's been a couple, we've done this couple, three times, I think, since I've been here.
It's the last time I remember being online, so, okay. Um, well, perfect. Thank you. Um, any other business to discuss tonight, Lisa?
No, I do not. Does anybody else have anything?
No.
That's come up? Any questions? Okay.
This is our chance.
This is your chance. Other business is also any, Commissioner comments or any other, um, questions you have for the staff or the, or myself? Good?
Okay, then I recommend a motion to adjourn. Or entertain a motion to adjourn.
There you go.
I move to adjourn.
So all in favor?
So moved.
Aye.
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 Aye, yes, okay, motion adjourned.
Hey, thank you very much.
Shut off your mics.